The excess levy call, the Harrison County Board of Education. We will postpone the pledge allegiance until the next meeting at six o'clock. So, we can open this meeting with discussion on the levy. One of the things that I, few talking points that I would like to bring up is what progress have we made in regard to advertising the levy or this, this giving out information to the public? Is all that information ready to go? What options do we have with? Do you have the sheet for them as well? The levy sheet? Mrs. Kynes has prepared a levy sheet that will show us the potential for reducing the levy in our next levy call, reducing the percentage by a few different values. I want to make it clear that at no point in time has anyone ever talked about increasing the levy, but the newspaper's not here tonight.
He said he would be here.
I'm not sure I repeat myself. At no time did anyone say that we were going to increase the levy. Whitney, if you'd like to kind of go over this, explain this.
That's what we're looking at.
Got a D or B? Uh, no, you can do it.
So, what I gave you was the levy rate in green is what we are currently at. The current levy rates. Now, we are actually at one hundred and four point seven nine percent of our regular general levy rate, which is actually your third column. The general levy rate is actually set by state legislature. The excess levy is set out of one of the calls. It's been this way for over a couple of years. So, when he said, can we put on some introduction? So, there's a couple ways. First, we could go beyond to match what the ones that is set by the state, which is that's our column. And then that would reduce our federal net revenue. I've got one piece of name off of the current sets valuation. You gotta remember, we gotta set the rates off of what the current sets valuation are. A little bit problematic, kind of gives me a headache. And then there's a ten percent reduction there, which would be not, we say about three point seven million. There's a nine point three five percent reduction, which is about three point thousand dollars. And a fourteen point one two reduction, which is about five point three. Now, this year was a very strange year for twenty five. It's actually getting projected to be significantly more than what our original levy cost was. Now, so my transition last week with the state department, that they had state tax department there. And they told us that the one of the gas properties was going to change in their set valuation. And they had a thing outside of the library that couldn't see, and they were supposed to send these slides and have them bring out, so they don't have to sell. So, it was just under eight million dollars because that classification, that's great property, which is in that eighty one point three two percent. So, it looks like it's about roughly two hundred thousand dollars. So, even though the sales of the main number is eight million dollars, because it's multiple five percent, it was a lot less. So, it's about two hundred thousand dollars.
Is that the adjustment the state had made calculation for the property taxes that they made mistake on?
No.
Okay.
No, this is something they went forward and they're trying to reduce it back.
Okay. Know about that?
Yeah.
Okay. And are we eligible for more collections on that?
I think they can, because they want to go back in.
Okay. Okay. I thought they, I thought they did.
That was last year's.
Yeah. So, what it was is there was a, I guess there was a new law that was passed in the legislature. And because of the law, the state had to adjust the calculations for their tax collections. They made a mistake and didn't do it the right way. So, what they did is they went back and recalculated everything. And it turns out that they're going to the county. And the county is going to have to approve whether or not they go after those additional collections or not. I thought our county did decide to go after them.
They get them, but we'll give them to our collection rate.
Okay. Okay. I just, yes, yes. There's a form actually.
I guess I can't do that.
Yeah, I just want, I just don't want to miss out on any additional collection possible.
Mr. Boyden, Mr. Man, uh?
Did he speak to us? Yes, he did. He did talk to us.
I was actually at that commission meeting for something else. And when they had that discussion, there was one note vote, and it was happy. But the other two, well, was Dave Hinkle said, you know, we need to collect this. We need to collect, and I believe it might have been the two. We could go back to what to collect.
Yeah.
So, when they, we heard anymore, when they collected, it comes through and shares collections to us.
Okay.
That's how we do that.
Okay.
And that's how we use that.
Sorry, didn't mean to.
Ours, no, it's not as bad as what we, some of the others.
Yeah, Richie.
So, the first quarter of business is we have to figure out what kind of a rating we're looking at. Or we could start with the actual levy call, see how much money we need. But I said with.
Oh, my.
And I am sorry.
It's wallpaper.
Or. But I tried to make it to where you can write on it, and then you could see it without, and I have a fine glass, but keep it on one page. So, I still made my own calendar. You know, I always take out my glasses if I have to read the levy call. See levy call. I'm, I'm, I'm about to get into it.
Do we know if anybody's asked for anything more?
I know, I shared with, yeah, W B extension and with the library that this was going on because they had a student that had an agenda. And I know that the extension was concerned that they were getting some pressure from W B to request their rates to go to sixty thousand instead of fifty thousand. I think it's been set at fifty for probably at least ten years, maybe longer than that. Can you add share one? Do you know what the other things that might be in there?
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very well.
Yeah.
So, a couple of things to note on here is. So, see the red? The red words are problematic. Because with the quality enrollment and you have a thirty percent fit in there, it's hard to whittle around and make it fit. So, the first thing I wanted to question, we take out all the specific language. So, like on A D A T, which is the duplication, so approximately fifteen dollars per student, very, one hundred sixty seven thousand four hundred. We have a lot of schools that their allocations does not cover their, cover their copy of that, number one. So, we may want to do two things there. Get rid of the language of approximately fifteen dollars per student. And. So, I've been out, we had multiple students. Boy, do you know, we've been in school. We've done everything to try to keep the communication now. And we have a fine release with copiers, and it's still still problematic. So, we've got lots of stuff, but we put copy on. So, then the other thing is, we didn't actually want insurance at forty five thousand. If the process will, it's costing about fifty five thousand. So, how are conditions of other stuff bad?
Well, I'm gonna say, why wouldn't you just up it? If it costs forty five?
Well, we want to go a little bit more than forty five.
Well, I know, I mean, but I mean, you don't, you don't want to burn it twenty five if it's costing forty five.
So, I'd say we need to up that a little bit. The other one is the support pressure for July. Even if it's that. Activity.
Transportation.
The transportation cost. Two, there's two issues with this one. It's about a hundred and twenty six thousand. Right now, we are overstating our compensation because, and the work of the transportation secretary, the secretary itself, is the, it's over, it's overkill. Right now, she calculates with the gravity kindness. And so, we have to pay them for each day. And then she turns around and she embraces the school. And she was only embracing about fifteen dollars per hour, enough for her rate. And then we turn around and write ourselves a check, and it'll be a success. So, we have no restating our expenses for this certification because of this. We weren't working with her, and she, I think there's a way that we can actually get all of these costs straight into the system to this account because we know one of those days our reserve and raise standard costs.
So, it must just be paid directly from the levy?
Yes. So, we would need to increase that dollar.
Do we know sort of the dollar?
Yeah.
If they each one individually?
Yes, we can.
And if we need to go up? We go up, we need to come down, we go down, and then we go where we're at. I mean, I mean, I look, you try to move it all over at one time, it's, I mean, like a Johnny's fire room.
Can I actually have it on my laptop? So that you guys make changes up there. Yeah.
Together?
Sit out.
The fact that, well, how does one skip around? Next, they're creating a buzzing, anybody, like elementary doesn't use near as much. Buzzing, they hook up the student amount that you can't spend on anything else. But they need kids all that.
But in a larger school.
That money goes quickly, and you don't have enough.
Right.
Right. And that's why we want to get rid of that. Change the way.
Specific.
Specific to what a school needs and not just free access in elementary school. Because you treat Los Creek and Big on the same, Los Creek and Johnson street on the same, across the board. Those were those accounts. Keep build up. They don't build up at the high school or middle school.
Saying to increase the amount for school, are you?
The grand total.
Your grand total?
And then we allocated, we wasn't allocating.
Outside of outside of school, okay.
Yeah. Because they also have more classes in the third floor. We allocated basic one, then we didn't double anything.
And what are you, what are you proposing to increase it by?
I would think that we would need that to be, we're gonna pay the true actual cost. I would think that we would need it to be. Three hundred and fifty four.
Now, where, where are you at?
A year.
You were already starting it.
Yeah, they were just.
We were still talking about extracurricular.
I was also confused.
We were back on extracurricular.
Yeah. I just had, I just had that question.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're starting free textbooks.
Free textbooks.
Do we need anything else there?
That's also worth about our instructional supplies for our schools, and we're carrying pretty healthy balances.
Todd, do we need anything else there? Well, we talked about technology, hardware, and software.
That's, there's another technology on that street. That would be part of the textbooks, like we'll be working textbooks.
Right.
So.
Right.
The need, yeah.
So, you want to leave free textbooks that pretty much alone, right?
It's okay.
We have a textbook adoption, you're rolling for a billion dollars. So, we get it quickly.
How many textbook adoptions we have coming up? We just did math, right? Just did that.
All right. Now you move on to the library.
This is just, this is not, this is not the public library.
No, this is, this is just a library.
School libraries, yes.
So, when this takes effect, we're actually decreasing some schools' pay rate and the number of schools. So, these numbers are good. If, if a school doesn't have a library, does it still get library money?
There is, our two schools that have requested that their libraries not to pay taxes. Mrs. Stutler and I have looked at it. And so, they asked that we pay back the library money and that we either cancel libraries, which we pay all of them back, and then they ask for additional instructional supplies. And they would be thinking some additional library supplies from the materials that I wanted to get from that.
Thank you.
It was traded.
So, what do we do with library?
So.
Each one?
Yeah, because.
Okay.
You're a school.
Like right now, I feel like a whole, whole lot of.
Well, we're, we're, we're.
I think we don't know.
We're going through the categories, we're gonna go through the categories, and we're gonna discuss what we, Whitney's gonna recommend what she thinks we should leave.
Right.
Right. And then we have the ability at that point to determine if we want to increase, decrease, add something.
Right.
That's part of the discussion. But ultimately, it's going to roll down to the levy call. And if we want, what we want to do in order to maintain the levy rates or reduce the levy rates, cut the levy tax. So, that, that's why we should go through all this first.
It's all on science.
Yeah, science will be next.
Any wish your questions, science department?
Sounds like it's okay then?
Yeah.
Which case?
What is, you know, one of the things I would like to see, and you may have it already, is in the budget what we've actually spent on that.
I'm giving it for you right now.
Which one, Mr. Ball? I want to see what we've spent, what levy money we have spent. All right.
I am.
On each category.
Let's see if we get through each one.
Okay, so, in the first category. Your little string. First category, the eighth pack. This year, we have expended nine hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty seven dollars. And our current available budget that we have remaining, six hundred and fifty dollars. Now, there's a big difference there because there's also some open P S telephones.
Like, okay. That's kind of. It's kind of.
So, I really think that that number is probably a pretty good number. You're writing in the basis.
Are you mature?
Okay. Well, we can think of the library when it says approximately one hundred and forty five annually. And that's divided among the elementary, middle school, and high school, correct?
Yes.
Is there a certain amount that goes to each level?
Yeah, it's based on, it's on that. Budget, but I didn't bring it down.
Where is that? Okay.
I have my book. And.
And I'm only asking because you know, we're, we're going to be down one elementary school, down one kind of middle school, down one high school when this goes into effect. So, is this number a true number if you have X amount of dollars per individual school?
Well, that, that's.
Because they.
Right. That is what we're collecting.
Right, right. And I understand the rate, but how we divide it?
Exactly. Well, so, this amount of money can only be used to library books.
Elementary.
Take that.
Right. Like elementary gets.
Three thousand school and a proportion of shared or student made allocation.
Okay, so.
So, every, every elementary has three thousand.
And how many elementary schools do we have now? Eleven. So, that's thirty three thousand, right? Okay, well, when this takes into effect, we'll be down one.
No, we won't.
Why won't we?
I'm gonna be closing.
No, I'm gonna do, sorry.
Just move it.
Go ahead, Ben.
It's already out. Yeah, well, yeah. And then the middle school is four thousand, and then high school is six thousand. And then what we do is we take the balance of our, we apply and the, I have to pay it right at the beginning of the number of students. And then.
Oh, okay, so then it'll be, okay, so it'll be, it'll be spread out.
Yes.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's why. Well.
That number is, is really important when it comes down to it. I mean, it's definitely not even be enough because you talk, you know, talk to so many library books, as the library and the telecs over there, as the technology and audio visual and equipment, things like that. That adds up a lot faster than books do.
And then the nice thing about that is if they have additional pieces, because the libraries are really unique in our schools because they're also instructional libraries. So, if they would go through all of their library money, they could always, they'd hit their instructional money, or if it's for technology, hit the technology allocation. So, that's what the nice thing about that.
That technologies for all the classroom just not the library, right?
Right, right. But right now, last year, twenty four, they had spent ninety seven thousand, two hundred and fifty seven dollars. And they have a remaining budget balance, total, everything, of three hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars. That's because we've had huge carryovers. So, they spent ninety seven, and they still have five hundred and fifty five dollars.
It is, but it's also the problem where we didn't have kids in school for a long time.
Those two years.
You didn't buy.
Right.
And they keep out. So, they're gonna need to raise that until they.
It's not something.
Five years. Which will take long to do that.
But they spent a hundred, they spent ninety seven thousand, one hundred and thirty five dollars.
Would you like to space what you think, you know? Hi, Josiah. Hey, by the way, nobody's ever said anything about raising the levy tax. I, we're on the levy right now, I just, I'm just talking.
Okay, I'll talk to you.
And we're not going to.
And there's no way. Make sure you get that piece.
Josiah, you're twenty four minutes late, so you have to stay twenty four minutes.
Right, so. Library and then science.
So, on the science, that's eight thousand. They have spent ninety three thousand, sixteen dollars and thirty one cents of their allocation, and they have remaining at the end of the year about two hundred and eighty three thousand, words, and that dollars, again, prior to your carryover.
Maybe one.
And again, that's one of those things that if they look over that, they could always tap into their instructional.
And you said there's like what?
Carryover.
Carryover. That's not, that's not money. And who can apply for that? Or who can ask for that?
The schools have their allocations, and their allocations remain with them.
Oh, and it's the school principal? The, the, okay.
Teachers usually work with their school principal, these are not.
Okay. Like, school A can't borrow from school B?
They actually, this year, we started doing a transfer. We did a transfer form because it has to be spent in their specific categories. So, we have some schools that have very large balances, like the extracurricular, my high school has a very large balance there. And their trip money. And so, they'll develop the form where, say, another school has a large balance of something else that she needs, that they can trade those funds back. As long as it's spent in the category.
The category, okay.
Yeah, they can. So, we gave that to them at their last meeting. And I'll be needing them the first August of January. And so, we use that whenever we're working with STEM supports, R C B, the delivery and free, but then some of our money, so they just transfer some of their money in that place to R C B.
And we don't have to go back to them.
So, it's already, it's already encumbered, and it's already been spent, yeah.
Special education.
Special education is. Eight twenty, eight twenty, they spent thirty three thousand, six hundred and fifty nine dollars and thirty nine cents of the allocation of forty four thousand, and they have a carryover in the near approximately hundred and forty three thousand, you know, twenty two dollars. And think that they're funding.
Yeah.
Multiple other schools.
Yes.
For special.
Guidance speech therapy?
They spent seven thousand and ninety five dollars, and right now, they have a current carryover of about sixty nine thousand, six thousand.
We said. Fine arts?
Fine arts. They, this first, they spent ninety nine thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars and seventy two cents. My share today, we might not have all the addresses anymore. And two hundred and eighteen thousand, just for two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars is available.
And this is the element you're being to? Oh, sorry, I'll refer, I'll refer to. To my little name key chart there. Yeah, okay, got it.
I, can, can I add something about that?
Yes.
Just so we're aware, a lot of the, a lot of the big purchases that band programs would make are several thousand dollars, and it takes a couple of years of saving to purchase that money or to purchase those things. So, I, I think when you're, when you hear that number, it's actually probably better than I thought. And like, like it was said, there was a, a year where we didn't have kids in the classroom that you really stopped purchasing things. So, it's not that the money isn't being used right now, it's probably being earmarked by, by that, by that teacher for a big purchase, you know? Like in Mount or Middle School, we're looking at Tiffany.
Oh, I was just gonna ask you, how much is Tiffany?
Uh, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. I, maybe if you get something on B stock, six to eight. So, you know, people are setting money aside for those big purchases. So, that's just something to keep in mind, especially in the, in the fine arts realm.
And then addition to that, if there was ever, if they, their principal, because band is also an instructional activity, that they could potentially, there's some latitude to use on. Every money purchase could be in and instructional.
Music.
Music. They spent twenty eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, and they have available carryover of about a hundred and eighty five thousand.
And when you say music, we're vocal music? Exploratory?
Yes.
General music, choral, and strings?
Yeah.
Eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty three dollars was spent, and they have a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Is this where the lot of music comes from, this theater, or is band, or is?
Theater.
If you get lot, if you get live music for your.
It comes from there.
Theater.
Theater. Yeah. That's that two thousand a year.
And how much do they have, what they're running to either?
They have a hundred, approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars carryover.
I know the price has gone up to buy the place.
Right.
Lot.
Well, and two thousand dollars will also not cover your live musicians. And depending, depending on what your, what your show is, you know, I, I know R C B really well. Mean Girls was a great play. They might have broken. They might have broken even Lion King, they made money. Uh, and so it's, it's kind of a feast or famine, I think, in the, in the theater based on, based on what they put on. It doesn't have anything to do with the quality, it's what is more attractive to, for people to see, so.
Physical education.
They spent nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and they have seventy thousand of their forty-four.
Hey, now, back up one thing for the theater, when we go to the consolidation thing, um, middle schools. Are we gonna have a middle school theater? Do they have anything for middle school?
I mean, that's, I currently. I, who, who's gonna teach it?
What they?
Yeah, I, so probably seven or eight years ago, there was a, there was a teacher at Mountaineer who, who had a theater production. Um, and, you know, it, it was successful, but I, I think that, you know, there's just no infrastructure for it right now. I, I'm all for exposing kids to the arts and giving them all kinds of opportunities, but middle, middle school theater right now is not, there, there's not the infrastructure.
Could be more of a related arts, like an improv class or something?
Sure.
Like to catch theater, that, no, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Improv is the. Is there, is there probably an avenue?
Why not, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, and so.
Because I, I think that's, if that's a desire that they wanna see or people wanna see, that we allocate the money and then we go about talking.
Yeah.
Probably how to, how to get.
Right, so because the methodology change. We, we make the broad.
We can talk.
We can. And I, just on the record, not me.
It says none, so I'm just, is, is it off, is it open that some can be, should that happen? But, because see, right now.
I'll script the. Really theater for none.
Okay.
Way about Lincoln Middle, we used to have a really strong one and it was lumbering horse. And a very strong, they had musical theater, I was blown away.
We could strike to work out an athletic call, high school, you had a, we had a high school, how do the athletic call? And utilize that money at that point.
Yep, okay.
For all theater and type of programs.
So it's not limited, they're just. I got that now. So then the next question, if I were to have.
Yeah, I would say music program, because music doesn't have high school, music is band. School theater arts program.
Hey. It's A. It's spent nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and there's seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four approximately carryover.
Operational support, United Technical Center.
That is one hundred and ten thousand and it's costing about five hundred and twenty-two.
Door down, do we need more?
That's our portion, fourteen, the most portion of the other two.
The, well, our portion is the.
For the six students coming through.
Yeah, most, eighty-nine to ninety percent of the students actually come from us. Current technical education, uh, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and ten thousand is coming from the excess level and a hundred and eighty-eight for the current years coming from us.
But they, they expanded, say, down to sophomores and some point it could go to down as far as freshmen and being able to enter the.
That's gonna grow.
And it's more costly.
They, they already take sophomore.
We do sophomore.
Some, some school will do some.
They'll change one of the ones that don't.
Well, I agree with you. I think, I think some freshman will be the freshman, some freshman will be.
So does that mean?
I suppose.
I would think that we can increase that some.
I guess that it would be on your end.
The added budget book.
Okay.
Add the, have a number four and five and nine, I, or seven.
Why is it going from two to five to ninety-eight?
Because we're spending more now than we're.
Say, why, why are we spending more than fourteen?
Because we actually have the largest proportionate share of, of students than the other two counties and their rate, their proportion share has decreased. Out of about four hundred kids, twenty-five are tailored, eight are nine or twelve. So we have about three eighty on the formula.
Yes.
And they changed with funding formula, it works for C P program, we both will say.
I'm not, she wants to look at five ninety-eight and increase to five ninety-eight.
From fourteen to five ninety-eight?
Yes. We just will go to six hundred and then we're gonna.
I, I would say six hundred. But how many more students do we have going to trade, so it's not a bad thing?
No, certainly, yeah.
So six hundred?
Our instruction.
Our construction. They spent thirty thousand, five hundred dollars and they have sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy carryover.
Now. If they don't have a certified art teacher in their building at the elementary level, do they still get the money?
Each of the classroom teachers, they're on art and they'll get a small application for art because of elementary teachers who technically.
And you're saying at this point is two dollars and fifty cents a student?
That's what is, what is on the student application.
So it's forty-two, five, but what did they actually use?
They have used thirty thousand, five hundred dollars on that.
And how much carryover?
Sixty-four, six hundred and forty-seven, I think.
Imploding.
The money goes to the program itself, not to the teacher itself, because money goes to the teachers, isn't it?
Right, if you're an elementary teacher. Now, if you have a planning teacher that's teaching art and you don't have a certification part, but they should get money. That's kind of a school.
Make sure that art's.
You would, you'd have a certification over there.
What are we doing with art?
That, that's a big difference. Two dollars and fifty cents, be two dollars. Those are just the students that are enrolled in the program, is that right?
Yes, for the high schools, the enrolled students and then the elementarys, all students.
Okay.
All right, um, we already talked about the school for extracurricular academic and like activities. You have the.
We did.
What's the number?
The, um, extracurricular, we gotta remember that they've spent a hundred and fifty-five thousand and that was at the fifteen dollars.
This year?
Yes, extracurricular.
And how much is left?
Uh, three hundred and forty-five. And that's basically the, the average year's.
She said the real cost is really three hundred and fifty?
I think, um, the fifteen dollars there, that's probably only covers about roughly a third.
Maybe I think it's twenty.
Twenty, okay, five dollars. Then, um, it's, uh, I would see that, that we would need to up that up to one hundred thousand.
You know, I, I think since I was there, uh, I know in the past they got away from it and then I think at the end of the year they kinda got back to it, is I think that when the kids, when they go out on county, it'd be mandatory that they be on the bus. They not be able to drive or, you know, so, so many parents are forced to leave work early to, because the coach says, well, we're not gonna take a bus and I think it's, I think it's unfair there, you know, parents wanna go to, gonna be able to go after the y'all to go see their job and their kid's already there because they rode the bus. And it was always the thing was, if you rode the bus to the event, you rode the bus back. That way you're, you know, we're responsible, you know, rather than let a child, you know, okay, well, they may end up with somebody else that's not their own parent. So I think, you know, I think that, that's, that all be mandatory that, uh, I think, uh, the transportation we provide by each school for events.
So would that be, uh, that number be enough at five hundred thousand then?
Wow, that, we're talking about tennis team and soccer team.
Yes.
All the teams.
That would be.
That would be.
Well, it's, uh, before we, before we get there, I, I agree with Doug. However, in the spring, when we have a shortage of, of substitute drivers, we, we have to, we have to get our kids home first. So that means we really can't take an extracurricular trip until four o'clock. Uh, so that, that kinda is a dilemma for some of the spring sports, which are smaller, but, but I agree with what Doug is saying. I think that when our kids, especially large teams that travel, I agree because I think that if I was a principal of both high schools, they were gonna take the bus because it was peace of mind and it's the safest form of transportation in America. Sometimes the coaches, they, they don't wanna ride the bus.
They have, you know.
But, you know, here's the thing, is if they, uh, if, if we either use a school bus or a approved charter bus that's following West Virginia State Policy forty-three, thirty-six, uh, you know, for transportation, some, you know, if they're traveling far away and they wanna do that and they have the money, then I, I would think that's fine. We work with those charter companies to get those approved and contractual agreements, so, um, I just worry a little bit about the spring sports.
Mr. President, we go away from the idea that we would rent a van safe for that tennis team.
Well, schools have been able to do that in, in, in following the, uh, forty-three, thirty-six. Uh, and, and that's been successful for, we did that with small groups, um, and so, I mean, that's, that's a viable way and then they do that at times. Uh, sometimes you have a small golf team, you're down to probably, uh, parents that are transporting them. Uh, and I know that that's not as convenient, I wish we had enough substitute drivers if we could provide that at any point, but, from, from day to day or week to week or month to month, I'm just not sure, the schedule is trips out in advance. Because you hate to schedule them and then all of a sudden you need to get a bus three hundred home, so that trip gets canceled last minute. So that's, that's a little bit of a dilemma.
So, but in the spring, probably, what tennis team possibly couldn't be the only one, because softball would be too large for a van.
Well, track.
Track. Certainly it is sometimes, yeah. You couldn't use one there.
Is there any kind of rule, like, um, out of county takes a bus, I don't remember, if you're out of county or you're two counties away or, I know in county it's usually just get there.
That's what it is.
And perhaps that would be an administrative regulation, um, that would specify that, you know, the last week thing we want is kids driving out of county.
Right.
Um, last minute and, uh, and then there, God forbid, be an accident, because that's happened in the past. I can't specify when, but I know that it's happened, it always brings a lot of, uh, concern. Anyway, I'll, however you guys wanna handle that or superintendent wants to handle that, I'd be glad to keep that direction out.
Well, that can be, that can be addressed in policies. That I might do that. And.
And then, and the coaches, she's, she's adding, she's. And the coaches have to be on the bus with their teams.
I agree.
Who drives the van, the coach or the bus driver?
It, it's usually, uh, the coach. It's usually a coach or approved at all.
Very teams are confusing.
And I know, we, we have discussed, we have discussed purchasing vans. And, and I don't necessarily agree with that because we, we have to, we have to, it's like having our own rental service there. So it's a big overhead and if you see, we got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually to purchase vehicle. One of those vans will cost you sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars at least. So that, that's part of the dilemma where you could rent for much less. I mean, that's, that's my thought. Ross, that's.
So what's the number on this, this? Say to one forty-six, what is it?
Oh, we're up to four fifty. So I was just looking here, um, I was thinking, um, what are you doing with the pool, currently are going to be twenty dollars an hour. So I ran into the pool, I'm looking for some time sheets and the trip wages. Yeah, two trips, that person, two trips that, so, so, hundred, this hourly rate is thirty-nine, twelve.
And that's our highest paid bus driver. That's our highest paid.
But then you have fringes.
That's whatever this.
So that's all right, we're, we're double dipping on our expenses, so we're paying now, and then we're.
Can we not, so, I mean, all the bus drivers get an opportunity to drop us, not one guy gets a hold of all?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Be good for.
Next one. Next guy gets one.
Let's, let's, let's move on, we can come back to this one, start, come back to this one again, because we don't have a number of what we would increase the, if we wanted to. Move off buildings.
I can do some more, um, research on that. The next one would be the building, the next, and we're pretty good at spending that. We spent, uh, four million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. And, uh, we have a carryover of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So we're doing pretty good. We're getting our facilities where they need to be. So, West Maintenance and Naples, um, we can make the seventy. We spent twenty-eight thousand and we have a carryover of two hundred and forty-nine thousand.
We're spending a bunch of that time.
Yeah, so that's right.
That might be, you know, again, that was, that was in addition, but, you know, you know how much a vehicle costs now and how much equipment costs. So, I mean, you buy two vans and a, and a box truck and it pretty much takes all that money. Now, we're fortunate to have a little bit of carryover, but also if, if there's a school bus, say, in the form, funding formula went through the state, we can buy five school buses, we can squeeze a sixth one in with about thirty extra thousand dollars. So we've been, we've been fortunate to have a little bit of flexibility to use that also. So, I mean, I, I would think with the increase in vehicle cost that, that would be at least a consideration.
You're also supposed to be getting an electric school bus, right?
Yes, and we're gonna.
So we're gonna get extra money for that as well, um, on our school, our bus allocations. So that would help offset some of that.
Yeah, that'll help some.
And they provide the charging station.
That we have to pay for that, we can't use this money for that though, because that is up to the bus vehicles. So we can use the, uh, maybe maintenance renovation for the construction equipment, but we'll probably use this transportation regular money because we can get that cost reimbursed.
Yeah, that'll come out of the excess level.
Anyway, Mr. President, I would consider increasing that if, at least a consideration.
From the one seventy-five to what?
Does that count all of our fleets, your car?
That, that's everything, that superintendent's car, the car that I drive, all the main vehicles. Driver education cars, and we own two driver education cars now, so we have to purchase those. Used to be we would get four from Gary Green's and one from, um, the Chrysler Garage. And then the Chrysler Garage, there's, there's a driver education program dried up, but. there's, there's a driver education program, it's right up, but thankfully, um, Terry Green's still two, that we leased, and then we purchased three.
Speaking of vehicles, then, since we mentioned, all right, superintendent has a vehicle, you have a vehicle.
I do.
And Danny has a vehicle.
Yes.
Okay. We have the magnets.
So you have then all maintenance vehicles. And then you also.
Right, you have all the things.
You also have transportation, uh, repair vehicles, that go out and repair. The school buses are only.
But you three are the only ones that have vehicles.
Oh, well, Lou, uh, Brian Dumeire, custodian coordinator, has one.
Doesn't he drive one of the vans that?
No, he drives a truck with a lift gate on it where he takes.
Where he takes all the supplies out. Okay, so that's four, that's, that's the total number we have.
Well, no, we have, the, each bus supervisor has a vehicle.
Well, why, why do they have a vehicle?
When they, when they go out, like, if there's an accident, they go out and they get their own call. I don't know, I'm here, they always have a vehicle.
I would, I would think it'd be easier to reimburse some mileage, and they use, there'd be you rather than we provide a vehicle for. I mean, that, that's expensive, you know, when you start giving every, you know, bus super besides you, besides them, giving them one, you know, I mean, if we have all these other vehicles, I think that gets.
You'd be surprised, you'd be surprised how much mileage is in it, if you pay everybody mileage, you'd be surprised.
Well, I mean, when you say.
Whatever you all wanna do, it's fine.
I, I was always one, kind of like, we ought to have a vehicle pool. We got the all-on work register, I mean, that, if they bring their own vehicle to work, and then they have to go out on a call, then there'd be a vehicle there to go out and check whatever they got to check.
It'd be cheaper to have, to allow these folks to have a vehicle here at work, than to pay them more money. So there's, there's balance there, I would think somewhere.
Like, how frequently do they, do they, I mean?
Oh, yeah, they're, yeah, they're out, you know, so they may go out at five o'clock in the morning, um, if there's a problem with the, you know, just to go and get access to the bus, if there's a substitute, or to check a turnaround, but they're, they're out there.
Okay, but if they, if they give them the main, to the bill, to the bus garage, the best way you have, not with a bus, and they sign out, and they go, at the end of the day, they bring it back and park it, and it stays there till the next day, whenever you may.
We can get an idea, we can challenge it. See, whether all state, we can get an idea from.
We're off track, we've got four minutes left.
What's that?
Okay, well.
Wait a minute, hold on, wait a minute, hold on.
Do the supervisors use those vehicles and stuff to check the runs and the horses and that?
When we, uh, yes, we do. So, they're, we're out, a lot of times at four o'clock, three-thirty in the morning. Um, we kinda spread out for a different section of the county.
Can we get a spend on the general maintenance for, um, what we, what we pay out of our general funds for the, uh, maintenance vehicles, and first of all, we spend on the general, uh, funds? To compare the two, because that would give us an idea of what we might wanna increase the, the levy by.
Um, one thing before we, we probably need to look at, not now, because we're gonna get into a discussion, which we don't have time for, the athletic facilities improvements and the middle school athletic supply and equipment, somehow that's probably gonna need to be combined somehow, some way, instead of separated. Okay, so, maybe you can come up with something for the.
The middle school, yeah, the middle school, uh, stuff, they didn't get the uniforms or whatnot, that, high schools don't get that.
We can, we can discuss that for next, our next, next floor section. All right, uh, this time I'll take a motion to adjourn, for Lou.
Second.
Mr. Tucker's made the motion to adjourn, just moved the second motion, is there any discussion? All those papers seem about, when will this, when will we? We talk about, we can talk about the next meeting in this, uh, in the next meeting, we'll send that to work section. We have to send that to work section, we can't.
Right.
Any call question?
Yes, a call question, is there any, uh, noted, all those papers seem about, let's hang on.
I.